Okay, thank you. Welcome to the August 23 Werham Planning Board. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll call Mr. King, Mr. Schultz, and Mr. Corbett, and myself, Mr. Swenson. Mr. Buckland is not here tonight. He's on vacation. Mr. Baptiste is not here. And our consulting town engineer, Mr. Rowley, is here. Before we start, I'm going to make it a habit of this board to remind ourselves and people that come to our meetings as to why we're here. And that is, I'm going to read this statement, and I'll read it every week. There are every meeting. Pardon me? The Werham Planning Board is a land use board whose primary purpose is to provide for and guide the orderly growth and development of the town of Werham. Werham Planning Board will oversee and administer the land use projects that fall under the jurisdiction of the Werham Planning Board with three primary objectives. To ensure the public safety, interest, and welfare of the citizens of Werham; the proper application of state and local laws, regulations, and procedures regarding land use; and to safeguard the land use rights of Werham property owners. Those state and local laws, regulations, and procedures which have been established by the voters of Werham and their elected representatives include: the Werham bylaws, the Werham zoning bylaws, the zoning act pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, the Werham rules and regulations governing subdivision of land, the subdivision control law pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41. Other functions of the Werham Planning Board include the consideration and preparation of amendments to the town zoning bylaws for submission to a town meeting warrant, and the development and maintenance of the Werham master plan. The Werham Planning Board is anxious to work with the citizens of Werham as our town evolves. We encourage all citizens to familiarize themselves with our state and local laws, regulations, and procedures to help us provide for and guide the orderly growth and development of the town of Werham. Thank you. I see no minutes to approve, and so we'll go right to preliminary business. First on the agenda is a discussion, possible vote about a bond for the Spring Avenue multi-family housing project. Mr. Buckland has pointed out to this board that there are some water valves that need to be repaired, and he has recommended that this board authorize him to prepare a letter to the owner stating that the board wishes to hear back regarding an agreement and schedule for those repairs, and also state if no responses made to the board within 30 days that the board will consider the project in default and initiate actions to pull the bond, make the repairs, and return the remaining funds to the owner. Seems pretty cut and dry to me. Any comments, Mr. Corbett?
Why are you turning away from pulling the law?
We could. I would much rather work cooperatively with the developer to give them an opportunity to fix it myself. Mr. Schultz, comment?
I think there's, at this point, probably no harm, and some benefit will accrue from actually sending a letter. I think if we get in the habit of good communications and good process, that will always put us in a better position working with developers and citizens and the town.
Mr. King?
I would have to agree with that. I think, you know, being cooperative and sending the letter first, give them an opportunity to respond and/or make the repairs.
You okay? I'd entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Buckland, when he gets back from vacation, to prepare the letter to the owner stating that we wish to hear back regarding an agreement and schedule for the repairs. So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Schultz, a second by Mr. King. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Are you here for Mr. Hurd? Well, I'm going to skip down to that for you, okay? Can you skip down to four, four? I think items two and three might take a little bit, so. Do we have paperwork on that, Sonya?
Which one's that?
This is the A and R for 47 Green Gate, yes.
Thirty dash twenty-one in A and R. I will turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Brian Gray with GAF Engineering here for Mr. Hurd, who has an A and R before you this evening. He's looking to divide his lot that has his existing home on it. So there'll be the lot with the existing home, and then creating a newly buildable lot out on Elizabeth Lane, Green Gate Lane area. This is in the residence sixty zone, requiring 60,000 square feet of land and 180 feet of frontage. We meet or exceed those on both lots, the lot with the existing home and the proposed newly created lot. If I could answer any questions.
The only additional line is the dividing line between the two lots?
Yes, it's 21 feet off of the existing barn. Correct.
I read this this afternoon. I noticed that lots are big enough, the setbacks are correct, the circle, what do you call the circle?
Shape circle?
Yeah, the shape circle.
Nerving circle, shape circle?
It appears to be in order. I couldn't find any issues with this. Mr. King?
No, no issues at all.
Mr. Schultz?
My only question is, the driveway's going to have to be relocated. I was just wondering where it was going to be relocated to.
It will come off Elizabeth Lane. You are correct, and that existing driveway will serve the new lot. Correct.
Mr. Corbett?
Good morning.
Mr. Rowley, any comments?
Two questions, if I may. I'm not sure about the note that says line a proposed 40-foot wide layout in C Plan Book 33, page 1030. Brian, can you give me an explanation of that?
Jeff prepared the plan, and there were a number of issues. There's a, it's a private way, there's a 30-foot way, there was a proposed layout, but I don't think it obviously is recorded. But I don't think any rights were ever assigned to that, if I'm correct.
What's the condition of Elizabeth Lane at this point? I just have a concern as to whether or not we're redefining the layout of the street. It looks like the lot lines are running down the center of a 30-foot wide way. I'm just not clear as to what's happening here, whether it's a 30-foot layout, whether it's being expanded to 40. If it's being expanded by this plan, then I'd say it's got to go through subdivision approval. You don't do that through a Form A.
No, there are no changes to the layout. They all come from plans of record at the registry. There's no new lines proposed, other than the one of division between the two lots. Just trying to see if I have a copy of that reference plan here in the folder. This is a 1988 plan prepared for David Hurd by your office formerly, which, that's where the 40-foot wide road layout proposed comes from. You want to take a look at that?
Yeah. See note three down there? Sometimes my memory doesn't go back that far.
So the only new line that we are showing is the line of division.
The only criticism I have, then, is calling it a proposed 40-foot wide layout, because this plan clearly shows that at that time, it was signed by the planning board back then in 1990. A long time since I went down there, so I don't know what the condition of construction is.
Road?
Yeah.
I can comment on that, Charlie, if you want to. I walk that road all the time. It's in good shape. It's a fine road.
It's paved road with a paved cul-de-sac on the end, yes.
And I defer to you, because I'm not fair enough on it as to what the disposition of it was after 1990. I'm sure it got built, and I think there's probably drainage facilities in there. You remember going down in this general area to do that? I just don't have any particular recollection, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call, I would entertain a motion to approve 30-21 A and R, J. Hurd, care of GAF Engineering, Inc. at 47 Green Gate Lane on Elizabeth Lane, Werham Mass Map 27 Lot 1005B.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. King, a second by Mr. Corbett. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I would.
He said A and Rs were just one person, right?
Does he even have an A and R or does it deserve?
That's what's on record with the registry. I say it's not going to hurt to have the additional.
Okay, we're going to take a recess just for a couple minutes while we work on the audio. Richard?
I'll, I'll come back.
Okay, the Werham Planning Board will resume. We've got, apparently, our audio problems are straightened away. So while we were on pause, this board did have some discussions around the process for the endorsement of approved plans for Bay Point Phases Two and Three, a definitive subdivision and special permit. We do have updated plans. We believe that we're in a 21-day appeal period, so we don't sign until that appeal period is over, which couldn't be until the 30th at the earliest. We need to get a covenant document that's referenced in the plans, and therefore we will continue this on the agenda for our next meeting as well. Any other comments from anyone right now?
Nope.
Okay.
The question is, are you going to, Mr. Rowley, are you going to review these plans against your notes to ensure they have whatever changes?
I'll review them, Carl, so that...
Can I make a positive affirmation that...
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I make a motion that we continue this for the next meeting?
Okay, I don't think we need to. We're just, I don't know if we have to do a... But that's fine. So, motion by Carl to continue this discussion on our next meeting. I need a second.
Yep.
Second by Mike King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we're going to talk about recommendations for the Zoning Board of Appeals on a proposed site plan review. The rain car wash at 3013 Cranberry Highway. For those of you wondering, that's the old 99 location. Little background for ourselves and our citizens, in the site plan review, there in section 1500, let me get that out. Site plan reviews are done by the Zoning Board of Appeal. In your use tables, they're called SPZ, or the planning board, they're called SPPs. And when these occur, 1565 dot two calls for review by town officials. The rain car wash program is identified as a motor vehicle service. It falls under the motor vehicle service category, and it is in the commercial strip zoning. That is called out as a ZBA special permit, and they're doing that. However, that permitting authority shall also circulate one copy of the site plan documents to the following boards, commissions and agencies, indoor departments for their information, and to request their review and comments. And it goes to the Board of Selectmen, the Sewer Commissioners, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, Police, Health and Building Departments, EMS, Town Consulting Engineer, Municipal Maintenance, and others to be termed as appropriate. I'm sorry. I don't see planning board listed there.
Are you looking at 1564?
Pardon me?
1564.
1564, yes. It is called out in 1564. I did have a, I did have a discussion, just an FYI, about a permitting authority versus a special permit granting authority. Two different entities, and there's other people that believe they're the same. It's just so you know, we need to learn about that. But anyway, this board has 35 days, I believe, to review and provide comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I would suggest, and this is just a suggestion, I haven't done one of these before, I would suggest that we each take this and come back at our next meeting. I think it's a little much to ask for our comments, seeing it for the first time.
I would have to agree.
Mr. Rowley, you're advising the ZBA on this project as well?
I am.
Do you have any comments that, or do you have anything you want to point out to us to specifically look at?
I did a three-page report to them back on the 10th of the month. There were several variances that the applicant had applied for in their documentation, which they submitted back to the Board of Appeals. It was their position that they had satisfied all of the variances and that they were no longer required. However, I pointed out that I would take a look at what they had done as a part of the submittal, and to take a look at the variance sections that were applied for and documented by Dave Requena, and see whether or not the plans had actually complied with the variances and that they were no longer needed. My latest letter to them, which was an additional five pages, suggested that there were a couple of variances that they had not completely satisfied, in my opinion, and needed additional expertise on. One had to do with the 15-foot vegetated buffer around the perimeter of the property where it faced the public way. This would be at the corner of the driveway that leads into what used to be Walmart, which is now Ocean State Job Lot, is at the traffic light there, just before the old Lobster Bowl or 99 Restaurant. The second variance had to do with internal landscaping and whether or not they had fully met the compliance of that with the islands that are supposed to be for every eight parking spaces. There was also a provision in there which I didn't feel that they met, where it said that for every 40 feet of site perimeter, there had to be an canopy tree. There are a total of six trees that they proposed to plant. There were another four or five that are right on the boundary, and it's questionable whether it's their trees or somebody else's. But when you took the total perimeter of the site and divided it by 40 feet, you needed 28 trees. There's a total of 14, as I counted up on the plan. So there needed to be some review of that. The other things that I had some concerns over with stormwater, they took five test borings on the site. The test borings were done more for the purpose of determining what the soil conditions are for the purpose of foundation design. They were done with a machine that has a, what they call a two-inch split spoon sampler. This is a tube that's driven straight down into the ground, and it's about that big around, and it gathers up a certain amount of soil within the inside capacity or container of that spoon. Then they take it apart and look at the soil, set it aside, put it back, and drive it again. The purpose of it is to determine the density of the soil and the characteristics of the soil that will help them design foundations. It's not intended to tell you necessarily what the groundwater elevation is or what the groundwater indicators are. So part of what I recommended was they do a standard test pit in two or three locations for the infiltration basins that they propose, to verify that what they have said is the groundwater is actually it. When you do a test pit, you're normally looking at the sides of the excavation, and you're looking at signs within the soil that tell you what the high groundwater level is, not where you see it on the date that you measure it, but what the indicators are in the soil that say this is where it can be. When you know that, then you can identify the bottom of your drainage system and maintain at least a two-foot separation. So in my view, they haven't complied with that or given sufficient information to that effect. They've also, with the stormwater, they have taken a certain rate of infiltration that's based on the sandy soil, which are in that area. But then they've covered up the infiltration bases with six inches of loam. The minute you do that, you do not get the infiltration capacity of the soil underneath. It's going to slow it down. Another thing that I'd looked at was the fact that the, if you look at the plans, the parcel is in two pieces. The original piece that was a part of the 99 Restaurant and the Lobster Bowl is registered land with the land court. And as such, it will stay as a separate parcel. The second half of the property, which is roughly a triangular piece, is currently owned by Ocean State Job Lot. They intend to transfer that property to the developer so he can combine it with the Lobster Bowl parcel for one piece. It will not be combined by a plan, because you can't combine registered and unregistered land. You can for building purposes, and I've talked about that with Dave Requena, and he says, "I don't care about that, so long as it's under one common ownership," so to speak. Even though it's separate parcels, I cannot deny a building permit. So we're good with that. One of the things that they are relying on is that they will get permission from Ocean State Job Lot to use their property as means of egress on the backside of this proposal. They have a right turn in, right turn out lane on Cranberry Highway, which would have to be approved by the Mass Commonwealth of DOT. So we'd be looking at that. They've also got all of this stormwater, either discharging at the 100-year storm toward Cranberry Highway or into the existing drainage system that remains on the balance of the Ocean State Job Lot property. So in my comments, I suggested that they needed to provide verification that they were going to be able to continue to do that. You just can't dump water on somebody else without their permission. So there were those landscaping features. The number of parking spaces, I believe there are 28 parking spaces on the site. Initially, I questioned the numbers to whether or not you needed them, but the majority of them will have vacuum...
Stations.
Stations there, so that you can clean your car out. They claim that there will be, they could actually clean from 80 to 100 cars per hour. That seems very, very high to me, but that's what the claim is. I think they're saying more in the order of 50 cars per hour, perhaps. The traffic study seems to indicate, as most traffic studies do, that Cranberry Highway can handle the traffic. Most of it's going to be passed by, some of it will turn in, some of it won't. So these are the issues that I put to the Board of Appeals.
Is it your observation that these, the Board of Appeals is addressing each of these issues as you've brought them up?
We did address a couple of the issues. One of them had to do with lighting of the site. I don't know whether you've had the opportunity to see the renderings of the site.
I have not.
They were always flooded.
Yeah, that's one other thing that I pointed out to them, too, Sam. Here's a whole bunch of pictures that were a part of the application. The first one is just the Lobster Bowl or the old 99 Restaurant. You don't need to necessarily see that. That's what the site's going to look at. You can pass those around, Sam, if you want. Yeah, pass them on. They're not all the same, so, different views. Yeah, they're claiming that Cranberry Highway is going to be raised in elevation about a foot as a part of the reconstruction that Mass Highway is doing. The plan said that their grades will match whatever Mass Highway does. I think we need a little bit more information than that, just to verify it, because we can't assume that what they've got shown on the plan is going to work if the grades of Mass Highway turn out to be a little bit different. So I had a concern about that.
But it was flooded by three feet.
It could be. It's in an AE zone, AE flood zone, elevation 14, which means that the entire project has to go to Conservation for approval. The other thing is that the flood zone regulations call that either the first floor of the building be constructed at the minimum flood elevation, which would be 14, or should be somehow floodproofed in another way. In other words, put blockage in the doorways or whatever to keep the water out. The floor plan says that it's going to be at elevation 12. So they've either got to raise the building, or they have got to identify how they're going to floodproof the building in conformance with flood zone regulations. And that's a federal statute that's got nothing to do with the town. The town has adopted those regulations, and you have to be compliant with it. So that's where we are in terms of the Zoning Board. They have not had a chance to read or go through my last letter, which went out last week, and they would be taking it up, I believe, on Wednesday night.
Would you mind forwarding me that letter that I can share with this board?
I did forward it, I believe, to you as a second email, Richard, and I did forward it to Ken's office. And copies went to the applicant, as well as to Dave Fichette.
Would it be on the ZBA website as a document?
I haven't looked to see. I'm assuming it might be.
I looked this morning getting ready. I didn't remember seeing it, but there is, there are a bunch of documents out there. I wasn't looking specifically for that.
It's a letter that went out last week. I think it was August 18th.
All right, so there's really, I mean, it's a permitted use in the area.
Subject to a special permit.
Right, yeah.
And in this particular case, they were looking for several variances, as well as site plan review. And that's where your board comes in, in terms of being what they call the permit permitting authority, as the bylaw says. They issue the approval for the site plan subject to your recommendations. And you can either approve it, you can deny it, or you can suggest conditions that they approve it with.
But do they need to file an application for a site plan review with us?
Not with you. It should have been submitted to you immediately after having been filed with the Board of Appeals, but I don't know if that took place.
This is the first I've seen or heard of it, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's statutory, that's in your zoning bylaw.
Yeah, it's 1564. Will they be, of course, send it here?
As soon as it's filed with the ZBA, they're supposed to file a copy of it with you, which means the whole thing, not just the plans, but all of the documentation, including those pictures, the application, the deeds that cover both parcels, the agreement, the documents that they have for doing the application, all of that.
Should I say again? We need to follow up with Ken because we don't have all of that material.
I did follow up with him and there's a discrepancy on the interpretation of the law we need to get through.
Oh, okay.
All right. He's on vacation.
I understand.
We have 35 days. So let's take a look at it. Let's make sure we get Charlie's pictures back. Awful modern-looking building for Cranberry Highway, isn't it?
Those are the kinds of things that you can write a comment on.
Yeah.
As I say, going back to our discussions about the master plan, the design really doesn't, doesn't fit.
So we'll carry that over to the next meeting as well. Any other comments on rain car washer now?
I think somebody's on the Zoom, Moriarty-Troyer.
But we don't, we're not in a
It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing right now.
It doesn't have to be a public hearing to discuss that. It's not a public hearing as far as this is concerned.
I understand.
You can entertain questions if you want before we move it. Are you going to entertain questions from the
No.
Okay. So I make a motion that we continue discussion to the next meeting after we've had a chance to review.
Motion by Carl to continue this to our next meeting.
Second.
Second by Mike King. Discussion, seeing none or hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes 400. Okay. Going to go into continued public hearings now. 21-21, site plan review, Wareham Mass, 3 LLC, 91 and 101, Fairing Hill Road, map 91 and 71, lots 1,000 to 1,007 for a ground-mounted solar array. The way we'll do this is, we don't, do not have the applicant here. We will talk about open issues. Carl, if I may, I'm going to rely on you after we get through some of the heavy hitters here to make sure that we have touched on all the action items that you are logging for us. First thing I want to talk about is we have a proposal from the Horstley-Witten Group, Mr. Neil Price. He sent a proposal in last week and it will get posted. I didn't see it yet, but I'm sure it will be. And basically what this is, is what I would call phase one of a two-phase or maybe even a three-phase analysis where he is going, he is proposing to do analysis, but first start by reviewing all the existing information that is available today. And materials, those are materials that we, the town, would supply, site plan, site plan review application, stormwater report, Charlie Rowley's review letter of same, and submitted comments, available GIS information from Mass GIS and town sources, the LiDAR topography, FEMA flood zones, natural heritage endangered species program mapping, wetlands, soils, superficial geology, land use, parcel boundaries and utilities, other relevant non-GIS data to be supplied by the town, for example, private well and septic system information, USGS publications, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, guidance on ground-mounted solar facility installations, and more detailed guidance on ground-mounted solar facility installations from the Rhode Island Department of Enviable Management, which is new in 2021, he points out, and other scientific information related to the evaluation of potential impacts from solar facilities. He will, he is proposing to conduct his preliminary analysis of the hydrogeologic, the hydrologic, water quality and related impacts from the proposed facility on available information. It's intended to be a screening-type evaluation of the likelihood for significant impacts in order to best identify the importance and type of new field data to be recommended to better refine the analysis in a subsequent project phase if necessary. That is, I think that summarizes pretty clearly what he's trying to do. He is going to rely on the applicant's stormwater database that he has provided. And just for people to know, he's proposing a cost of this phase one of $28,000. I think the question's right now is that we need to ensure that the applicant is willing to comply with the request from, from the Horstley-Witten Group and if he wants to proceed.
Has this been forwarded to the applicant?
Yes. Yeah, I consider this to be exactly what I was looking for. It is just phase one, so I'll, Mr. Rowley, I know, I'm sure you have some comments you may want to share with us.
No, I don't think I have much to say at this point. I've had no discussion with Mr. Price.
Yeah.
We've heard nothing from the applicant's engineer as far as his analysis of what he did and why. I don't have anything more than I can add other than the comments that I've already made and submitted as a part of my review for the project. And I've heard nothing back on those comments either, so
Mr. Corbett?
Nothing more.
I don't see how to go forward without talking to the applicant. I agree.
We need to talk to the applicant before we go further.
Mr. Schultz.
Just a comment to Mr. Corbett's. I don't know that we need to talk to the applicant. As I read the ordinance, we can say this is what we want to do. The applicant then is, the ordinance is on them to appeal the decision. And the only thing that I read they could decide to appeal was the person we chose, if I read our bylaws correctly. But that's, I
And if they don't do it, we can deny the permit.
Yes.
Because we're incomplete at that point because we want that done.
I believe that the appeal could be based on, the appeal could be based on the qualifications of the person and/or the depth or
All right.
Of the analysis.
Okay. We can go back and review that, but I don't, but I still think we could say we intend to move forward and notify the applicant of that and then they have the right to appeal.
Sure.
I don't think we need, I mean, we tried to negotiate with them, we tried to be cooperative, but they haven't been showing up at the meetings. It becomes very difficult to
Mr. King?
I don't know if I would, if I would actually move forward with informing them that we are going to do this without giving them an opportunity to respond to the request, especially with, you know, it's $28,000 that they're going to pay.
They're going to pay for.
Right. So if someone was expecting me to pay 28 grand for something, I would want the courtesy of a letter saying, you know, "We expect some sort of response from you within X number of days concerning the subject, and if we don't get a response, we're going to consider the application incomplete, and at which point we'll, we'll deny it."
So if we wrote a letter from this board to the applicant saying, "We and you are in receipt of the Horstley-Witten Group proposal and this board is comfortable with it to move forward for phase one, please put the 28 grand in the 53G account."
Okay, before we move to that point, we were still talking about the proposal. What I did not see in the proposal was a statement that I asked for, that they would provide an assessment of the risk if we don't proceed with the second phase. I didn't see that. I looked for it. Do you think that's reasonable?
Sure.
Because if, as Mr. King said, the second phase is going to be considerably more expensive than the first phase and the applicant may balk at that. I'd like to know what the risk is to not doing the second phase.
I don't think they'd be able to answer that question without actually getting through the first phase.
Well, but that's what I wanted was one of the deliverables from phase one, was a risk assessment of if you don't do phase two, here are your risks. Here are the unknowns. Here are, as a consulting engineer, I've done that in the past.
Yep. I think that's reasonable. Could I ask that you take a look at task four, the summary report, and just write the sentence that you think is appropriate that would address that need? Is that
Sure.
Is that okay? And we'll send that back.
Does everybody think that's a reasonable, Charlie, you think that's a reasonable request or not?
Well, he's thinking out. I think it's kind of implied myself, so
You're not really going to know what your true risks are until they get phase one done.
No, but that's what I'm saying. At the end of phase one, I was asking for a risk assessment of
So the ask was, the question was to you, Mr. Rowley?
So
It's a deliverable. It's a deliverable.
Insert a statement that says at the end of phase one, based on the information gathered, they're going to either suggest we go to phase two, and if we don't, then the risks are X.
That's sort of what I was saying.
All right.
All right, I'll send that to you, Mr. Sherman.
Charlie?
No, I was just thinking that he has two documents. He has the application and he has the stormwater report that was done by Atlantic Design. He also has the review letter that I did, that I pointed out several things. I'd like to hear his response to the information then that he has to date before suggesting any, any further action to be taken. And with that, I suppose he would have certain recommendations to get to a point where he could then say, "If you don't do this, here's the risk that you have for, that you'll have to assume for people that are outside the site." But I would think it's a little bit premature to expect him to do that too soon on phase one. I'd much rather hear what he has to say and hear what the rebuttal might be from Atlantic Design to know really what both sides are thinking. Right now, we only have the initial submittal data. We have response that I did. I don't have any reply from Atlantic Design and I'm assuming he doesn't either. So we're sort of hoping for certain results, but we don't know what they're going to be yet.
Were they invited to be here?
I don't, I don't know they were specifically invited. They don't need an invite. You know, we publish our agenda, they're on the agenda.
This is the third one, I think.
I'm astonished they're, they're not here.
Not the third time. They've answered no questions.
When was the hearing continued to? Was it continued to tonight?
Yes.
I have to look at the motion. That's how we typically do it.
Right, next meeting.
Yeah, but also the
Typically is, it's continued to a time certain. I just want to be sure that if it was continued to tonight, that it is held as a public hearing and then obviously you're not going to have the final results of the determination, so you're going to have to continue it again, but
We're going to have many, many continuations. It's my guess.
Do they have to agree?
Just be sure that you're in the timeframe for the continuation of the public hearing and that you're within the
135, is it?
No. For, for site plan approval.
So I want to go back to the meeting of
I got to go back to the zoning bylaw.
All right.
Sorry.
Meeting of 7:26. We specifically requested the applicant to submit a letter requesting continuation and Ken said he got one, but I haven't seen it, so I don't know. So that we, we didn't run out of date.
So Mr. Buckland's on vacation. If you will get me the statement that you, that we want to add under the
The risk assessment, yeah.
I will forward that. I will write a letter to Mr. Price and I will write a letter to Mr. Shanahan saying that this board is comfortable moving forward with his plan with this one edit and ask him to please come to the next meeting and share any thoughts and concerns he has with us. Does that sound reasonable?
It does.
Yeah, we haven't heard from him for a while.
Wow.
That could be a good thing.
We've brought up a lot of issues and he hasn't been here for any of them.
Well, there's, I've got a list of 10 open action items, not counting what Charlie's asked for, that he hasn't responded to. Plan updates, we're looking for
Site line report?
Yeah. Well, I can go through the list.
Tree audit. There's a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't made a determination on the tree inventory. They haven't provided the site lines. He hasn't removed the request for waiver on setback from the plans. He hasn't revised the plans to reduce to one utility pole, which was your request. We haven't resolved the cul-de-sac issue. We did request that they continue this, so we didn't have a problem with the clock. We have not resolved the issue of the ancient way. And then I have to go back. I have to add Mr. Rowley's request of Atlantic that I did not capture in our action register.
Okay. We have, as Carl, Mr. Schultz has just outlined, we have several open issues and most, there's three, for me personally, there's three critical ones right now, and that is the hydrogeologist analysis, the site line report, and a third one is around noise. And I wanted to share with this board what I've learned about noise in the last couple weeks at a high level. Ms. Wertz brought it to our attention last week and I've done some analysis and reading and research and she's helped me as well. There are laws in Massachusetts about noise in solar farms. It's interesting that they, they appear to call out, they don't, they don't do limits of noise. They say you do a baseline and it can only go up 10 dB is what I'm, what I'm reading. There's a different measurement techniques that, that they suggest you do and I'm a little unclear on, but where I'm going with all this is, is that I found the, the regulations in chapter seven of CMR 3, I believe it is. I think I sent it to this board. I found the DEP's interpretation of that and how they administer it. Ms. Wertz had provided me with a summary of solar farm noise issues, went back through the site plan review. We're missing a lot of product specs for the equipment that is going to be installed there. There's only specs for the inverters and panels and there's a lot more that need to be looked at and none of the ones that have been submitted have any noise specifications to them. So I'm specifically interested in seeing the transformer noise specs and there is is, um, what's called out on the schematics anyway, an HVAC system, and I believe it's for the, I believe it's for the battery building.
Mm-hmm.
And that'll be, that'll be a noise generator. And given that this is abutted by residential on two sides, I think this is a critical one that we need to dive into, and we may need to get some help doing it, too. So, um, that's all I have. Mr. King, do you have any other comments on Ferring Hill before we open it up to the public?
No.
Mr. Schultz?
Um, I guess my only comment is, is I want to make sure that whatever process we're following for continuing these hearings, um...
Is right.
Is correct, and that the applicant, or his or her representative, um, uh, is...
Will participate?
Participating, yeah. Um, and then I have a couple of questions, uh, when, when Mr. Buckland's back. I, I do know that there is a requirement that the applicant is current on their taxes. Uh, there has been a contention that they're not current on some, uh, fees owed to the town, um, and I don't, I don't know if that's relevant to submitting a complete application. If they owe the town money, uh, I'm a little concerned as to why we would be, uh, moving forward with permitting.
I'm going to the, to the, um, to the...
That was a question I'm trying to research.
Yeah, to the application, and I believe that part of the application is a statement that their tax standing is in good shape.
Correct, and that, that I, I believe, but there was a contention that there are other not-tax, uh, judgments against them that they're, they're in default of, and I want to know if that's relevant.
I need some, I think we need some evidence or some...
Well, that's what I was going to ask the applicant.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Corbett?
Timeframe. Do we have enough time to do everything we want to do?
Um...
Don't they have to agree if we're gonna...
Yeah, this is where Carl's going, in the public hearing continuation process. We've got to get this locked down.
Right.
That we, so we know it, and we do it legally, and don't get into a...
We don't want to get caught.
Yeah.
Or if we're running out of time, then we need to vote.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my main concern right now.
Yep. Okay. Before I open it up to the public, Mr. Rowley, any comments?
I just tried to find it specifically, but it only says that you have to open the public hearing within 65 days of the receipt of the application, which you did. And I think you, you can continue it until you get the information that you're looking for.
I think that's what Ken...
If it was set through your vote last time to continue it to tonight, you need to vote to continue it to the next meeting at least.
Is there a limit?
To the best of my knowledge, until the public hearing is closed, no.
We have not closed the public hearing.
No, and you shouldn't.
Okay. Um, with that, I will open the floor to the public to come up. Um, I still will use my three-minute rule. Um, I will ask that, um, if you have any questions as opposed to comments that you want to make, you address any and all questions to me, um, as chair. One of the, I've been learning, I've been talking to our town council and learning the proper procedures on how to do this. So it is my intention that, um, that the public hearing process is an opportunity for the citizens to come in and make comment to this board. Um, I do not want to get into a debate environment at all. Um, that's something that I need to avoid at all costs, so therefore, if you do have questions, address them to me, and I'll determine if it's something that we want to entertain, and if it, if it is something we want to entertain, I'll see if we can find someone to answer it. Um, with that, I'll open the floor.
First, I, first I want to thank you for looking after my session.
No, I can't hear you.
Is the green light on?
It is on.
How about try the one?
I just hear, I just don't hear any amplification, Tricia.
Hello? Push on off. Lights are green. Okay, I'll speak loud.
Okay.
Um, first of all, thank you for taking the noise issue under consideration. It's an important one. Um, and then secondly, I just have a couple of pieces of, I think, information maybe for you, Carl. I know this last meeting, you said you were interested in what the Conservation Committee also said. Um, at the Conservation Committee meeting last week, uh, this particular plan was supposed to have been continued, and Mr. Shanahan, and no one showed up there either. So the grounds were open. And then with regarding, regard to the money that, um, was owed, from what I understand, with the segment against that property, and it was $200,000 plus owed, supposedly it went to court, and they would put on a schedule, and the last I need is $1,060,000 compensation.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? How are you, Annie?
I'm good.
No cake this week.
Oh, I was ridiculed on Facebook. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Charlie.
Okay, sure. Um, so we're strictly faxed today.
Yeah, I want to say, I'm going to suggest that our speakers remove their mask.
Oh, that's good.
But I can't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, I, I listened as much as I could on the way home. Tricia, help me, to the interview with Mr. Price. I heard you say, Mr. Swenson, Richard, that, um, uh, everyone had town water, and I know Nancy and Kathy have spoken to you about that, but today I spent, um, most of the day going from house to house, which I like to do, and, um, the survey included 30 homeowners on Ferring Hill, Fieldstone, King's Cross, and I, and I realized what this hill really is, because it's all downhill in those streets, and Heath Road, and of 30 homeowners, um, only six had town water, so that's only 20 percent, and...
So you know, I, I did forward that information to Mr. Price.
Right, yeah, okay. Um, and they all expressed a real concern about the safety of their wells, the runoff impacting, what might be in the runoff, and one person said, a number of people said, that there's a river that comes down Ferring Hill Road, um, during some of these more severe storms. One woman said you could put a floatable boat on either side. The crown is still up, you know, visible, but the water is so intense. So, um, that's a real issue, and that relates to what I've said before about the 100-year storm. Um, a preceding fact is that sites can expect a 15 to 50 percent increase in volume due to the installation of solar PV panels. Additionally, a solar PV development site stripped of vegetation may result in erosive stormwater flows. I think that Mr. Price is going to address that, but that's a, that's an alarming statistic. Um, the 100-year storm, I want to read some things. Um, "Stormwater infrastructure designed to handle what yesterday's stormwater professionals would consider a 100-year storm, a storm with a 1 percent chance of occurring in a given year, will likely fail to manage flooding from today's severe storms," argues a study from Carnegie Mellon University. Um, NOAA, uh, this is from U.S. National Aeronautics and Space Administration. Um, "Climate change results in more frequent intense precipitation, blah, blah. However, the standards that U.S. stormwater professionals use to design infrastructure hinges on data more than 50 years old. A new study calls for revised dot design standards for stormwater infrastructure that account for the changing definition of extreme storms. In the Northeast U.S., for example, extreme rain events occurred 85 percent more often in 2017 than they did in 1950." One thing that I, um, think is really important, 420 parts per million of CO2 right now on Mauna Loa, where, where the testing has always been, and we haven't had that high a, it's never happened before, except for 4.5 million years ago. So it's almost as if we're going to do storm, um, you know, the 100-year storm, we're going to have to go back a long way, not the last 100 years. Um...
Few times about up.
Okay, the last thing I want to say is that Mr. Price said, so the most dramatic change you can get from the water budget standpoint, explaining that, Mr. Price said, explaining that mature for, forests slow down the rain as it falls, take up rainwater, and otherwise minimize runoff. Clearcut the forest, that goes away, so a very large component of the water budget now becomes runoff. Last thing from the DOE R on guidance for solar, "Use of land for the purpose of solar voltaic power generation should be compatible with most other types of land usage." Not sure...
You're abusing me now, Annie.
What?
You're abusing me on your time.
Okay, just one more sentence. I don't mind abusing you. However, DOE R strongly discourages design, designated locations that require significant tree cutting because of the important water management, cooling, and climate benefits trees provide.
Thank you very much. I'll see you next week, I'm sure.
All right, yes, you will.
Anyone else? Okay, we have, Ms. Morales will be next.
Eric Lintel, Squirrel Island Road. Um, I'm going to hold off on a lot of comments I would like to say, because Mr. Shanahan isn't here again. I find it very discouraging that, you know, he's on the agenda, and I want to hear what he has to say, especially about Mr. Rowley's peer review report. There's some very important and concerning questions on there. So I just, I just find it very unnerving that he doesn't show up when he's on the agenda. I, I don't know what the issue is, but because I know even at the Conservation meeting, didn't show up with that either, and people had a lot of questions. For this to move forward, if he doesn't show up, I don't know what the hell is going to happen here. So I'm, I'm going to hold off on a lot of comments until he shows up, because I'm very interested to hear what he has to say, so I can come up with some other comments or questions, but if he doesn't come to present his case, how do we move forward?
Okay.
So I will table till next time.
Yeah, I have to admit, um, I haven't been on the board but a couple of years, and I, I, I don't remember having, I remem, I know I've been at a public hearing where the applicant wasn't there due to a misunderstanding on schedule, but I've never been, other than that, it's always been, the applicant's always been here, so I don't know.
Can we just close the hearing and vote, and hide the applicant?
No, I don't think that would be too smart.
Isn't, isn't that within our reach?
Might be, might be. Um, Sonya, can you have Ms. Morales speak to us, please? I can't hear her. We are trying to get your audio working. Ms. Hayes? Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Rowley said that in order to be part of the sight line review, or the, yeah, um, I needed to put it on the record. So I am, I am undeveloped land, but I am out in that undeveloped land all the time, and I would request that.
We've already, the problem is that we've already done a site visit with the applicant, with this board, and determined all the locations we were doing the site, the site reviews, the sight line reviews from, and that, that work's already underway. I don't, I'm not comfortable...
You can't add that one?
I'm, I'm not comfortable doing that.
Okay.
Sonya, could you hear her at your PC?
I can hear her, yeah.
We're just not getting the volume that we need.
That's it, my friend, that's all you get.
Ms. Morales, are you still there?
Great, I, I heard a little bit.
Yeah, we can barely hear you now. We're having microphone problems here. Uh, can you do Test 1-2 for me, please? No. I apologize, it's not working tonight. I apologize, I, I, there's nothing I can do right now. Any other comments from the public?
Open being it, once again, you can't hear me.
Okay, um...
One thing, we need to get this settled. She has something to say. We need to hear it. I think she's tried three times. I think we need to find a way of doing it, or get her here, or something. I don't want to be held accountable because she wasn't heard.
Understood. Um, the...
Did she call?
She called it.
My phone, and then she called my phone.
Yes.
I wouldn't give you a phone number.
Yeah, that's, that's dangerous. Let me, what, let me, let me say this real quick. Um, the Board of Selectmen have gone 100% Zoom, and, um, given the current state of affairs, I think that would, I would recommend that this board do the same thing. If we do that, it, it accomplishes two things. It gives some people an opportunity to fix the, the AV problems that we're having here, but if we do 100% Zoom meeting, the audio works great, and we can get, we can get everybody's comments very simply.
We're ever going to solve the problem? I mean...
No, it's not.
Is it the lack of technology that we don't have?
I think it's a lack of understanding how to use it properly.
I don't mind... I like having them here, to hear them, to see them, uh, to, to hear exactly what they have to say. It, it bothers me. I mean, Zoom for time being is okay, but I like the people here. I like the comments.
I do, too.
Like to see the people.
I do, too. Sir?
Yeah.
We're getting a little informal here, so, so be, be patient with me if I stop this.
Okay. Peter Golds.
Hi, Peter.
I just, I don't do Zoom at all, and I make an effort to come to these meetings, and I don't think it's fair to, to make it so that I'm no longer have access to, to hear what's going on or speak, okay? And on top of that, since I'm talking today, I've been waiting to, to hear the applicant, and then I was going to say something, and I keep coming to these meetings, and I make an effort to, uh, you know, out of my life to take time out to be here, and I think it's very disrespectful and unfair to the community that he doesn't show up, or some, okay? I just don't think that's fair. I just want to say that.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, there's no question that an in-person meeting is great, and it works fine. No question, 100% Zoom meeting works fairly well. This is a hybrid one that we're, that we're desperately struggling with. We, we had Ms. Morales on once, it worked, and it's not, I think it was last, last meeting, but, um, not tonight. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe Ken's got some magic he can do that we don't know about, so. Um, I apologize to Ms. Morales. Um, any other comments from the citizens? Annie, you've had your, you've had your time. Anne?
Linda Sharp.
I'm sorry?
Linda Sharp, Linda Sharp. Um, Linda Sharp. So, um, I have heard that there are people in the community, other than the people that are working on it tonight, that have the ability to make the hybrid meeting work. Have you heard that this is the case?
I have not. I have not.
Would you be willing to talk to those people?
I would be very willing to have our IT department talk to them. I don't want to take ownership of the hybrid Zoom thing, but I will help facilitate that.
So how would that person start the process?
I would suggest they talk to Mr. Underhill, who's the director of IT over in the town.
Okay, so you're giving them permission to...
They can talk to them anytime they want. They don't need my permission. Do you know who this is that executing the hybrids successfully?
Well, there are towns that are, but also Leslie, Leslie Davis?
Edwards Davis.
Yeah. Who's, according to Annie, that might have been her comment, I don't know, does have the ability to just like make it work.
Okay, I'll, all right. I appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. I would entertain a motion.
When is our next meeting?
So I'm looking up right now.
It should be Labor Day, which I don't think we're going to meet, right?
The 13th of September, is that Labor Day?
No, it wouldn't be Labor, no.
Can you confirm that, Sonya? Is the next meeting the 13th of September?
That would not be Labor Day.
I don't want to get it wrong.
23rd, no.
Second Monday, right?
It would be the 6th.
13th.
Okay.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 20-21-21 Site Plan Review. Wareham MASH 3 LLC, 91101, Ferring Hill Road. Maps 91 and 71, lots 1,000 and 1,007 for a ground-mounted solarway until September 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. King, second by Mr. Corbett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Can I ask one question, please? Is there any way we can get Mr. Shanahan here? I mean, he has an agenda, but there's so many questions that only he can answer. And we're kind of at a standstill without having some feedback from him.
Agreed. It would be my intent to have Mr. Buckland reach out when he returns next week. All right? I'm a little, I don't know if it's right or wrong, but I'm a little uncomfortable dialoguing directly with the applicant. I'd much rather go through Mr. Buckland. Okay.
Did we vote on that? We did not vote.
No, we didn't.
We took a motion and a second, and we did not vote.
On the continuance?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. 400, thank you. We have no new public hearings, any comments on the master plan? Updates or new initiatives from the public? Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion on an upcoming workshop. We will have a Zoom meeting next Monday night, 6 o'clock. It will be a workshop for this board to do whatever we decide we're going to do tonight. I mean, I have some ideas. Mr. Rowley has some ideas. You'll see on the agenda, we have a discussion and possible vote on scheduling a hearing for amendments to the subdivision rules and regulations. I'm going to kind of combine these two, these two items into one thing. Since I've been on the board, I know Michael's seen it, too. There have been, we've had discussions about updating our subdivision rules and regulations. Mr. Rowley has come up with two versions, what we call the red line version, a 2017 and a 2020, I believe, versions. That this board has never really taken up for discussion to talk about the rhymes or reasons as to why we want it, why we might want to do them, if we want to do them. And Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm led to believe that this board has the ability to change subdivision rules and regulations on its own.
Need to go to town meeting vote to change subdivision rules and regulations. You need a publication in the newspaper that you're holding a public hearing for that process. You go through the public hearing, and you can vote them. And as soon as you vote them, they're in effect.
So...
The current one is dated March of 2013, is that correct?
I believe so. So it's been a while.
Well, that's the copy that I've been using as a reference. I haven't found a newer one.
2013.
March 2013, yeah.
So that's one topic we could talk about. The, Mr. Buckland's anxious to do a change. You mentioned it to me this afternoon, and I forgot what that was. Could you...
It's called MS4 regulations. It has to do with stormwater. This is a, it's been a project that they have had for a long, long time. They, being the federal government, through the EPA. And it's tailored mostly to cities and towns in cleaning up stormwater. But one of the things you have to do is make sure that your subdivision rules and regs and your zoning bylaws are compliant with the statutes that they have set up for stormwater handling. I went through this with the town of Mashpee. See, the last year or the year before, I forget which. It's the same thing. They did hire a consultant to actually look at that statute and compare their zoning bylaw and their subdivision rules and regs to what the statute requires. And there were just a few things that they needed to do to upgrade their regulations to be in compliance. So it may be that that's all we have to do. A lot of it has to do with low-impact design, making sure that stormwater is handled in the proper way through infiltration practices, sediment control, that type of thing. But it's also in compliance with what the town has to do. So I think you're probably going to need an overview of what that EPA regulation is to know a little bit about it. I can't speak that intelligently about it because it's been a while since I've seen it. But we need to have that document so you can see what it says, and then be able to compare your own rules and regulations, see whether you comply. Some things I think you're going to find that you will. Other things, maybe you'll have to adjust a little bit. But it's part of the process that you would want to consider if you're doing the upgrade to the rules and regulations.
So I think the thing to do is we need to hear from Mr. Buckland. He's, he entered this agenda item, and he had commented to me a couple of weeks ago about some, the MS4 thing, I'm pretty sure, so. But he may be under the impression we only need to modify the subdivision laws.
I believe if zoning has anything in it that applies to stormwater control or anything like that, such as site plan review, you need to make sure that that's upgraded in there as well.
Okay, so we'll hold off on MS4 till Mr. Buckland's back. The thing that's most interested, that I'm most interested in for the, for a, for an upcoming workshop is for this board to go through the zoning bylaw, Chapter 15, Site Plan Review. Go through it top to bottom, go through all the different paragraphs. Make sure we understand, because there's some very, very confusing paragraphs in there when I, when I go to read it. 1564, 1565, the ones we're talking about. Cross-review and input across boards. Permit granting, special permit granting authority versus permitting agency. Or it's very confusing. Charlie is already confirmed that he can be there next Monday night. So I think right now, I would ask, does anyone have any topics they're really interested in tackling first, right out of the box?
I like the idea of addressing the site plan review.
Carl?
I'm very concerned with getting an understanding of the flow of the process documentation. When an applicant submits an application, when we on the board can get access to the materials, where we get the materials, how do I prepare for the review? Because frequently, I find myself showing up at the meeting, and yes, I know it's on the agenda, but I don't know what I'm going to talk about. So I can't be prepared.
So...
How to be prepared for each meeting?
So if we tackled, let me go to Sam first. Sam?
I agree. You get these big plans, and are asked to discuss them. I don't have enough time to give them a discussion. Something that, except for the beginning, these people should be required extra day before meetings to get this through. So we can... I mean, that, that you have wasn't there until now.
This, yeah. Charlie, you have thoughts for Monday night as to what you think is critical for this board to tackle from an education and awareness perspective?
I think I would agree with Kyle that it's important to not only have the documentation in ahead of time so you know what it is, but so that you can avoid having questions such as tonight, statutory timeframes and things in which you have to act. It's a little clearer to me under the subdivision rules and regs. And there's just a couple of questions on the site plan review end of it. I think you can hold public hearings for a special premise and keep them open until you're satisfied. But once you do that, then you have a certain amount of time to write your decision. But it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a cheat sheet with that documentation on it so you can refer to it at any time. So that sort of, that sort of thing, I think, was important to sort of square away. It'll make your job a lot easier, I think.
So here's my proposal. I'm going to propose that Monday night, we focus on site plan review, and we focus on it with the attitude that I just heard you outline, that we understand it A to Z. We understand the process steps that we need to go through. We understand who's responsible to share with other committees, what the timelines are, what the approval process looks like. And maybe it'll take one or two. At the same time, I'm going to forward to this board the subdivision markup documents. So you have those in your hands.
These are proposed changes and updates, yeah, okay.
Just so that everybody knows, this is just a, I took the regulations that were sent to me through Ken's office, and I just marked them up. I put paragraphs in there. I didn't eliminate things and put red in its place. I tried to add to it so that you could see the before and after. And just thoughts and ideas. That's all they are at this point. They're not meant as you got to do this. It's something for you to look at and consider. If you don't feel that one particular thing or another is important, then we just cross it off the list and be done with it. But I think it needs to be done to brought up to speed a little bit for some of the things that we're seeing. And some of the, some of the guidelines and the designs that are coming through perhaps aren't reflected so much in what the regulations call for, so.
When we do get together Monday night, I'm thinking that maybe we do a workshop on the third Mondays. We lock that down. We have our planning board meetings on the second and fourth. We have a workshop on the third. And we do that till we get caught up. And we're comfortable to have less than once a month. Maybe go once every two months or something. But I think there's, we certainly have site plan review work to do, and we have subdivision work to do. So think about that, and we'll discuss it Monday night. I did work with Sonya and Ken regarding publishing our, a preliminary version of our agenda, of our agenda on off Mondays. That you will notice that there was a preliminary agenda sent out a week ago. And we did get updated. There was several updates made to it. That is not my intent. It was, we're going to try to make sure that the preliminary matches the final as much as possible, and just try to deal with emergency-type situations so that people have the time to do the research and be prepared, and that these documents get posted so we can see them earlier than a couple of days before, so.
And I would say it has to be an emergency, not just another addition Monday at 5 o'clock. Those are really tough. I just think we should, as a policy, say, okay, next agenda item next week versus getting something Monday.
Sometimes...
There are emergencies.
Sure.
You have to do it sometimes, but we do it too often.
The one I'm worried about is A and Rs, because we have such a short window there. And that's one of like the Elizabeth Lane one tonight. I think was probably appropriate that we added it in. So anyway, we're going to, we're going to try to do that. I have no new business or correspondence. Future meeting is September 6th. I would entertain...
13th.
I'm sorry?
13th.
13th.
Sorry, sorry. Oh, but we're having a workshop on the 6th.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Before I call for an adjournment motion, anyone have any last comments?
None.
The 30th, yes.
A week from tonight.
30th.
The 30th.
Sorry.
You did get my response that I'm going to be out of town.
No.
I'm going to be out of town.
Okay.
If we can, if it's going to be a Zoom...
Yeah.
And we can keep it to a reasonable amount of time, I will drag myself off the beach while I'm at Key West. And I will, and I will attend.
I wouldn't want you to do that. Let, we can probably get along without you. I'd rather you have fun on the beach. All right? But yes, it's intended to be an hour meeting.
Yeah.
Not a long one.
And it's, and it's an informal workshop. It's an informal workshop.
Informal workshop.
No public, no public comment.
No public comment, but the public is invited to attend.
Yeah, okay.
And if Mike has anything specific he wants to...
I can, yeah, I can always fire an email or something off.
Okay.
So our workshop is the 30th. Is that correct? Our next meeting after that would be the 13th.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Corbett, second by Mr. Schultz, to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Meeting is adjourned at... 7:40, not bad.